Started. Let's first start off by with introductions. Donna?
I think you're muted, Donna.
There you go.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. Donna Nicholson, District Three.
And Dawn?
Don Dehan, District One.
Scott?
Scott Nelson, District Three.
Eric?
Eric Casino, District Two.
Doug?
Doug Carman, District Two.
And I have a three six oh. I'm hoping that's Raul.
It is. This is Raul Delaun, District One.
Thank you. And I'm Jim Simmons, District Three. So introductions. Can I get an approval of the agenda? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion, changes? All those in favor signify the same eye? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Do you have a close? How about approval of the meeting minutes for February seventh, two thousand twenty-one?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Been moved and seconded. Any discussions? Alterations? All those in favor signify the same eye?
Aye.
Do you have a close? Okay, we're gonna jump into public communications here. This gives people not, not a commissioner, the opportunity for three minutes to speak. You'll see on there that Paulie's got the timer up there. It'll start green. When it goes to yellow, you have thirty seconds. And when it's red, please kind of wrap up. So we have here, it looks like we have a couple of people here with raised hands. Bear with me. Looks like how about Barry Halverson?
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. I want to first start off by thanking Andrew Daphobus for circling back with me on a couple of issues that I've provided following the three February meeting where we talked about Lake Lawrence and y'all voted to change the SED for Goat Island from natural to rural conservancy. But that meeting and his presentation to you brought up some disturbing things that I followed up on immediately following that meeting. Andrew's been working on this. I'm hoping that maybe he'll elaborate on that tonight with you. What we've discovered, or I discovered, is that the nineteen ninety SMP and its documentation has one map and one set of SEDs accustomed to it. And in two thousand thirteen, the Shoreline Environmental Designations Report and the Inventory and Characterization Report, the final draft that you are using now for the Shoreline Master Program draft has a totally different SED for Lake Lawrence. They're not the same. The geo data that is used by the permitting section for Thurston County has a map that shows SEDs contrary to what the nineteen ninety SMP shows and contrary to what the Shoreline Environmental Designations Report and the Inventory and Characterization Report shows that you are using now. The potential problem with that is if that happened at Lake Lawrence, and it's not just at Goat Island, there's some other areas around Lake Lawrence, too, that were not consistent with what the current report and draft shows. How has that affected other lakes, rivers in Thurston County? How has that affected property owners that have filed permits with the Thurston County Permit Section? I know Andrew's working on this with geo data, trying to figure out when this happened and how it happened. But the problem is, is that the twenty-seven hundred SEDs that require re-designation across the county may be a larger number than that, or potentially even a smaller number than that. But it is a problem. I know Andrew's following up on it, and I intend to maintain some visibility on it. And I hope he briefs the Commissioners who is working the Shoreline Master Program, keeps them informed on this issue. Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. John Woodford?
Good evening, Commissioners. I, too, want to bring up a past action or inaction, whatever you want to.
No, I can't hear anything. Is anybody else?
Hello? I'm sorry. I thought I had unmuted it, and I looked away, and I guess I didn't. But anyway, Commissioners, I just want to say I, too, want to bring up what might be kind of an old issue, but the Shoreline Stakeholders Coalition has a number of times brought up questions about the so-called letters of exemption. And that was discussed at some length in the last meeting, and I didn't feel that any sort of conclusion was reached. Back in November, when we're dealing with chapters one hundred, two hundred, and so on, I pointed out in a letter to the Commissioners that in section nineteen one fifty, there is no definition of a letter of exemption under, under the heading of definitions. And this is absolutely critical that it be defined. No one knows what it is. From the discussion I heard at the last meeting, it was clear that there was a whole lot of misunderstanding about what a letter of exemption is. If we go back to when Brad Murphy was making presentations long ago before the Commission, he stated at one point that any development within the buffer or in the lakefront waterfront property would require at least a letter of exemption, if not a permit of some form. The he implied, although he didn't specifically say, that a letter of exemption is really a permit to not get a permit. It's, it's a document that the property owner has to get. They have to go down to the permitting center, pay a fee, and at one point it was kicked around. It was going to be sixty dollars, and there were other numbers that were kicked around, but I've never heard any final number. And I remember when Commissioner Nelson raised the question, would replacing one board on your dock require a letter of exemption? The answer was yes. Another question was asked, does mowing the lawn require a letter of exemption? And that question wasn't answered. So just what is it? And this really is imperative that this get defined. Thank you.
Thanks, John. I don't show any other people wishing to speak. If there is anybody out there that would like, oh, we caught one. Kirk Cleveland.
Evening, Commissioners. Yeah, I'd like to, I'm on the Lake Lawrence, the Finance Committee, speaking just in support of what Barry Halverson said. Again, we appreciate the cooperation on the Goat Island, but he did show me the documentation that showed the designation for a couple of those area zones had been changed sort of out of nowhere. And that understandably is a Commissioner, Commissioner level designation change that we're all interested in seeing what happened and how that happened. So again, just like Barry said, the permit holders, I should say, permit applicants. You know, how, who knows how many have had to deal with incorrect designation and that sort of thing. But that's it. I appreciate your time. Have a good night.
Thanks, Kirk. Any other attendees that would like to speak? Going once? Going twice? Okay, folks, we're moving on. So we have a little agenda item here that we need to talk about. Is Jennifer here? Yes. Anyway, concerning bios, and we just want to make sure that everybody's on board with this. And maybe Jennifer could just explain what she's looking for from everybody.
Well, you're all looking for it from each other. This came from a request that Commissioner Carmen, I believe, put forth a couple of meetings back that, that several of you may be interested in seeing bios, short bios written by yourselves about yourselves to share with your colleagues. And these would be public records, so just so you know that upfront. I don't know how, what level of information the planning Commissioners wish to put in the bios, but we'd be happy to, you know, take all those in and format them and send them back out to folks. But I think it's kind of up to the committee what level or the Commission, what level of information, what types of information you wanted to tell each other about yourselves. So we don't have anything in a rules or procedure that requires this or talks about what that should be. I have, since that discussion was had in one of your Zooms, I had a citizen express a lot of interest in seeing where Commissioners come from in the county and what other organizations they might be involved in and stuff like that. So putting that out there, that was just a comment from one citizen, and it's up to sort of the group what, what you want to do with that, and if you want to run with it. And no action is also a possibility. So just putting that out there.
Thanks, Jennifer. Any thoughts from you guys?
That was something brought up during our interview process when the nominating committee was asking what would you like to see different or added to. So it wasn't, didn't necessarily come from me. Came from the Commissioners. I'm not opposed to it.
Well, let's go this way. Is there anybody that is opposed to it? I'm not hearing anybody or seeing anybody shake their heads. So I guess the idea would be, I don't, I don't know, Jennifer, can you send out us a little form or something that kind of ideas of what, because I have no idea what to say.
I can definitely put something together and send it around for you to maybe, maybe you should do it in a two-step process where maybe for your next meeting, we can, we can work up a little bio form based on what we know you're interested in sharing, which I'm not sure what that is, but we can come up with some ideas. And then you can react to that, and you can make the changes that you see fit as a group. And then the next iteration would be you actually fill it out, send it in, and we can put it together in a PDF and send it background.
Okay. We actually start with what we submitted to volunteer. You know, when you submit your application to volunteer for the position, you submit basically a resume.
I'm not sure what you submit. Those don't come to me. Those go to the Board Office. I can certainly talk to the Clerk of the Board to see what kind of information that she has maintained on file for you all as a starting point, if that's where you want me to start.
I have mine.
All I'm looking for, for me personally, is just some type of format, maybe three or four questions that can, that, so I can know what to, what, kind of what you're hearing, possibly what people wanting to know about us, or, you know, I'm a pretty boring guy, so I don't know. I know where I live.
I've only heard from one person, and it was about where, yeah, where you're from in the county and what your, maybe what your job is in real life, if you have one, or if you're tired, and then what other groups or boards or affiliations you may have in the community.
So anybody want to speak up on a suggestion or anything, or?
Well, it would just be interesting to know what each person's area of past expertise is, what they bring to the commission.
Okay, can, can we kind of go back to Jennifer? Can you just set us up a little format, and then we, next meeting, we'll just discuss it?
Yeah.
Go from there. Does that sound like the plan to you guys?
Yeah. This is Raul. I have a, I have a little comment regarding that. You know, I think that it is important to have what kind of experience and what, what do we bring to the table here. However, you know, what kind of organizations do we belong to? I mean, you know, do we want to talk about we belong to the Catholic Boys Club Support Group or which is irrelevant?
Well, I can see if you want to put that down, then that's what you're gonna have from there.
No, but you know, I think that we should focus on what's relevant and what things do we do bring to the table, as the previous Commissioner mentioned, because that's really what the people want to know. Are we kind of yahoos or whether they know anything about anything? Or are we some people that are actually involved in the community, and we care, and we have some knowledge about what's going on? That's it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think I agree with yeah, it's very good. We can just keep it to a page or so, or, yeah.
Yeah, I'm imagining like a half-page situation, but it'll be maybe up to the individual, but I'll, I'll throw something together for your next meeting. I think I can run with just this discussion we've had here.
Okay, great.
Actually, I was thinking more like a paragraph.
Okay.
Anyway, unless, thank you, Jennifer, for doing that. And we're off to Andrew.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Andrew Daphobus, Associate Planner with Community Planning and Economic Development. So tonight, we'll continue with the Planning Commission's review of the Shoreline Master Program draft document in chapter nineteen six hundred. And staff are looking for specific amendments that the Planning Commission wishes to include in the public hearing draft or options that they wish to include in that draft. We did receive one written comment for, ahead of tonight's meeting regarding septics in the shoreline. And that comment also referenced a past comment that had been submitted on that issue. So the one that we received today was forwarded to the Planning Commission and posted online. And then I went back and checked, and the comments that they referenced from November were also put on the Planning Commission website at that time. So if needed, we can look at the website and pull that up, but I just wanted to give you that history there, that we did receive all those comments that were referenced, and they were provided to the Planning Commission. Okay, so with that, I will go ahead and share my screen, and we can dive into, back into chapter nineteen six hundred.
Okay.
All right, let me make it a little bigger if I can. So according to my record-keeping here, we, and we're going through section by section, we had stopped before we got to the section on Phil in nineteen six hundred one forty. So I think it's been serving us fairly well to just kind of open it up at each section and ask Planning Commission if you have any questions or comments on the section. So I'll go ahead and start there. Does anyone have anything they want to bring up in this section for Phil?
If somebody wanted to do development in a natural environment, they can do that. And even though the whole parcel is, is natural, there could be parts of it that, in reality, aren't and could be perhaps filled. Is there a process by which they could do some fill in a natural environment?
Um, well, that's a good question. You bring up a good point because you know, the natural environment does not necessarily prohibit all uses, as you've noted, and certain if you're building a project, your project may trigger more than one section of this of nineteen six hundred. And Phil is a good example of that, right? Your, your residential development or something like that could potentially require that. And it might not be a place where we want to start out in the natural environment, but yeah, if there are other, if something is otherwise permitted, you know, that might be worth looking into, whether there should be some sort of caveat here. If that makes sense.
I think there ought to be some kind of an avenue that they at least go. And if it makes sense, it makes sense. If it doesn't, it doesn't, so.
Um, and yeah, a way to potentially address that. I'm trying to, trying to think of an example, but you know, one way to look at that would be prohibiting it unless it is associated with an otherwise permitted use and phrasing it that way. That, that could be a way to accomplish that. Because it's, you know, if, again, if another use is authorized and would potentially have Phil, you know, that would be, that would be inconsistent. So that may be something that I need to go back and take a look at. I think that would be a good, a good task to go and look at that and make sure that, and because I know that the WACs also have language related to Phil. So to make sure that there isn't an outright prohibition there and just make sure that's all consistent. So that is a good, good question.
I mean, good fill, clean fill, some dredging could be a good addition to nourishing the soil in the right places, so.
Yeah, I think it depends on where you're at, and you know, is it fill in the upland, but just in shoreline jurisdiction versus is it fill in a wetland? You know, these things could have different considerations.
Right.
And in terms of having beneficial, benefits to the environment, you know, this, this section is saying it does have a carve-out for restoration purposes that are noted further in the section. Great. So I have captured that. Okay, anyone else? Okay, not. I will keep scrolling down. And we'll get to Forest Practices, nineteen six hundred one forty-five. Does anyone have?
Oh, no, I, I thought you were going second.
Oh, sorry. My bad. Okay, I'm sorry. Let's back up.
One forty, A. Two, I guess. We, didn't we talk about changing those SDPs to admin SDPs?
We may have, and I did. After we had that discussion, the meeting where we looked through the, the table, I went through and noted where I, down here, where I thought you had requested changes up above. So I can go back and look at that. And if you did, can certainly make that change.
Yeah, because there shouldn't be any reason to have a hearing examiner for under-residential.
Okay.
You guys ought to be able to make that decision.
Let me mark that.
Well, the cup, the cup is water word. I don't know. I think we probably have to discuss that, but.
Yeah. So what I'll, and Doug, I, I know that we, we did go through all that back when we did the table, so I will go back and just make sure that whatever is captured here is reflects what was up above, because that was the most recent time that you all went through the permit requirements for, for all the uses and modifications in the draft. Yes. All right. So anything else in letter A here? If not, we'll go ahead and go to B, which is application requirements. B and C, and development standards.
Under, under five there? Under development standards? Can you give me some examples? I was trying to figure out where you, why you would fill below the O.
Yeah, because that's going to be in the water. I don't have any off the top of my head, other than to say that, you know, it would be with an otherwise permitted use that is permitted below the ordinary high watermark, right? This is saying if you have something else that is water-dependent and, or a project that is designed for public access, and it is approved under those provisions of the SMP, that Phil could potentially be a part of that. And that's kind of what I was getting at for the piece up above about the natural environment, that, you know, it's, it's saying you can do this as long as it's associated with one of these other things you're also permitted to do. That, that's what comes to mind. You know, and I'm, yeah, I don't want to speculate, but I could look more into that for you, but I think that's what this is saying is, you know, if you're doing one of these other uses, which would need to be permitted by this, by this document, you can do fill in those limited instances below the ordinary high.
Would that be like a boat ramp or something, I'm thinking?
It could be. It could be, yeah. That's a good example, I think. Technically, that would be Phil, right? It's not, it's not something that would be floating. It would have to be on the substrate below the ordinary high watermark to be considered Phil.
So what, what would Phil have to do with C? Cleanup and disposal of contaminated sediments. Not, you know, five C.
Yeah. Um, you know, I'm wondering if this came directly from the WAC. Possibly. I could look into that. I don't, I don't.
It's just confusing to me, and I, you know, I, I think it'll be confusing to the public and, and so we ought to at least have examples of what it's for.
Yeah. And are you saying that for the entire number five or for five C?
Oh, just to fill below the the high watermark.
Right, so number, number five. So I, okay, so I could go and look at what the WAC say, because I'm, I don't know, I have a hunch that that's where this probably came from. Is that something that the Planning Commission would like me to go back and take a look at? Looking, looking to every.
To me, that what I'm speaking, you know, maybe I'm speaking wrong here, Doug, but it just sounds like we're looking for kind of definitions of what these uses are and examples. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, better so that we understand them. I mean, should they even be here? I mean, should you be allowed to do, I don't know. I'm just.
So, and I can say that at least like a public or for water-dependent uses, that is a broad term that is for uses that by their inherent nature are dependent on the water. Right, like a location on the water. So a marina is a water-dependent use. You can't put a marina out in the field somewhere, right? You know, that's a broad term that is defined under the Shoreline Management Act. And then, you know, the Shoreline Management Act also makes broad provisions for public access, when it's required, how it needs to look, and the same goes for mitigation. So it's making allowances for those otherwise permitted uses.
Hey, Andrew, Raul here. I have an observation. You know, if it is confusing for us that we're supposed to be knowing a little bit more than the average citizen about this kind of stuff, I think that is a very valid point, and we need to clarify it in such a way that the average person out there would have no confusion, otherwise it'd be chaos at a public hearing. So I, I know that we're preaching to the choir because we seem to know a lot more than the average person, and that's one of the things we have to keep in mind when we present these, these things, is that if we understand it, the average person will not understand it, because they're not immersed in this kind of stuff. So with that in mind, I think that you can probably come up with something a little bit better to clarify this stuff, and I really appreciate all the hard work you've been doing. And I hate to be throwing more at your plate, but it's like, you know, you understand what I'm saying, right?
Oh, sure. And that, I mean, that's why I asked the question. That's kind of the, you know, the process here is just looking for consensus across the Planning Commission in setting the, forth the changes that y'all want to see in this document. So that's, that's, that's why I asked the question.
So Andy, in this case, I had a moment, looked at the WACs, and our language in this draft matches the WACs. So and I know that's important for us to be grounded in the state guidelines. So Phil's, the WAC says, "Fills water word of the ordinary high watermark shall be allowed only when necessary to support water-dependent use, public access, cleanup and disposal of contaminated sediments as part of an interagency environmental cleanup plan. Disposal of dredged material considered suitable under and conducted in accordance with dredge material management program of Department of Natural Resources." And then other, some other things. Phil's water word of the ordinary high watermark for any use except ecological restoration should require a conditional use permit. So I feel like this section seems fairly consistent with that WAC, but I just want to provide that perspective.
Okay.
I like that a lot. Maybe we should just insert something there. Reference, WAC, blah, blah, blah. And then that, that way people can get the whole language, and then instead of trying to crucify us, they can say, oh, it's law.
It just looks like a section that's put in there to let the government do what they want to do if they need to do something below the watermark. I mean, that, I'm not saying that's wrong, but because a regular consumer homeowner or something probably isn't going to do many, most of these things, if any of it.
Well, and remember, keep in mind that the shoreline master program and the shoreline management act is to accommodate, it, it's, it's a whole host of things. It's to accommodate protection of the shoreline, but also use of the shoreline and public access to the shoreline. So it, so this language is intended to get at all of those different things and, and, and spell out under that sort of broad umbrella that we're planning all, everything under, you know, where would we be allowing, being, allowing fill water word of the ordinary high? And I mean, we can certainly think about how to, and make this more clear or provide examples or something like that. My, my, and can certainly do that anywhere that, that you guys want to call out as especially confusing. But, you know, I, I think making a reference back to when the language comes straight from the WAC versus some, you know, somewhere else, that's going to cascade through the whole document that, you know, that a large majority of this language is either lifted directly from or references back to, you know, the WACs in the SMA. So but, you know, that said, where, where it makes specific sense and there's a specific need for it, then, you know, I think that, that's the direction that I'm looking for from planning commission.
Yeah, I agree, Andrew. You gotta, it's a heck of a job. The bottom line is that people are easy, they're easily misunderstanding things as we present them during, in legislation or regulations and it can be misinterpreted a lot of, in, in the wrong way. And that's what we're trying to avoid here. Because from personal experience, I know full well that I know it. I'm telling them as straight as it is, and my God, they just go and want to burn me at the stake and, you know, take me out into our feathers, you know, but and the bottom line is that if we can clarify, hey, we're just repeating what the WAC says and clarifying that, it, it would be fairly simple to do. And then they can, instead of focusing the, the animosity against us, they can focus it where it needs to be, the change of WAC. Change the agencies that compose the WAC, not us. We're doing our job. And that's the bottom line. We're all working hard at this, especially you. So.
And we do, and I, I think, and not take away from changes that the planning commission would potentially make to the draft, but I think that also calls to mind just a talking point for when we get into this next phase of public outreach and, you know, communicate, clear communication about things that jurisdictions are required to do in an update versus areas where jurisdictions have a little bit more leeway and, and where the planning commission has kind of shaped things. You know, I think that will be important, right? So here are areas that, you know, the WACs say you shall incorporate the following standards versus, you know, jurisdictions, you know, should create policies that, that get at the following goals. And then you have more wiggle room to do that. But, you know, in some cases, the WAC is very, very prescriptive. In a lot of cases it is, right? And, and it, that's all throughout this document. So I absolutely agree with you that that is a public outreach and a public education issue to let people know, you know, the, the information we're working with, the laws we're working under, the constraints we're under and where we, i.e. county, you know, can, can really shape this document to its local circumstances.
Sweet.
But I have made a note here for the specific section to see if there's a way to provide context or examples in this specific instance based on this discussion.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you. Okay. Does anyone have anything else in development standards? For Phil? Otherwise. Okay. Otherwise, I will scroll and pause at section nineteen six hundred one forty-five, which is Forest Practices Timber Harvest.
Andrew, can you tell me if I'm understanding this right? It, it seems to me that if, if somebody gets a, a state permit from specifically DNR, then the amount of oversight the county would have on them might be zero in many cases. Is that true?
For that specific forest practice activity, I believe that's correct.
Is that something that's at our discretion or is that something that WACs says we have to defer to DNR on?
I believe that's state law.
Right. You got it.
Go ahead, Raoul. You have, I know you have expertise here. So go ahead.
Yeah, no, I'm a forester and that is correct. The county regulates those within their, our jurisdiction that are, do not fall within the parameters of the state law, which are quite, quite a few of them. But if you're under FBA Forest Practices Act under DNR, then that's right. The county stays out of it. They have their own strict regulations that have to follow cer- very specific guidelines. Do we part of that? For all those, I'm qualified for those programs, then the county comes into play, which is a great thing.
And yeah, to cap on that too, this section also talks about, it makes reference to conversion. So so Eric, to answer your question, one, if you're doing forest practice activity on forest land under DNR, then the SMP would not control that or, or regulate that. But if you convert that land to some other use and it, you know, you're in the shoreline, then other, you know, the SMP would, would take effect.
I, I think I understand all that. I just, it, the only reason why I, it even caught my attention is because it, it makes sense that if DNR is running the program there, that there, it's their rules that are going to be followed. But we often see times where a gooey duck farm would lease land from DNR. And while DNR will have rules for them and ecology will have rules for them and Army Corps will have rules for them and everything else. The county also has rules for them. So it seems like it seems like we're harder on the gooey duck farmers than we are on the foresters. And I'm not saying that's a bad thing. I'm just saying that I noticed it.
Yeah, I think it's a fact, it's a product of state law that regulates all these things and, and preemptions from what doesn't regulate.
Exactly. You, you said it. That's it. I couldn't have said it any better. That is exactly what Andrew said is how it applies. It is state law, so therefore it applies. The gooey ducks and that kind of stuff, there's no particular state law that addresses that. So you have the conflicting or overlapping jurisdictions in those areas. Forest practice applications is very important for the, the, the future of Washington State and is very integral part of our economy. So therefore there, there has been a lot of laws written about that versus gooey duck is only particular to certain areas of the state. So that's in and out.
Okay. Does anyone else have any comments under, under Forest Practices Timber Harvest?
Under, what is it? Three B there? An SDP for class four general permit? Can you explain that? I can't get my head around that.
And this is, okay, so I am, I have not done a lot of work directly with forest practices. So, but what, from what I understand, you know, there are these different classes of permits and some of them are regulated by forest practices and then others do come under the, the purview of Thurston County and that, and that the class four general would be one of those.
Yeah, it's a conversion permit. So it's when you're converting from forest land to another use. It's called a class four general forest practices permit where shorelines are being converted or are expected to be converted to a non-forest use. So that's where the, our local program shall, and this is from the WACs, assure no net loss of shoreline ecological functions to maintain ecological quality. Quality and the hydraulic system and the water should health. So that's where we do have some influence.
And Jennifer, if I may add to what you said, because it's such ways into this. Bottom line, if you're in a states regulated forestry application, then you're on very strict guidelines as a open space activity within those parameters. Once you get out of that, then you come under the regulations of the county because you're no longer in that specific thing, open space regulatory or area. So that's why. When you converge, you basically are converting lands to development area or similar uses, which can be a lot more intensive than just a regular forestry applications for, let's say, warehouse or Hancock or anybody else. That's why.
Also, in this case, the SDP and the cup are appropriate. So because the public, the public hearing and the public should be made aware of this big, this big a change.
All right. Anything else in one forty-five or what's next in one forty-five?
Can you remind me where hazard trees ended up? Was it in four hundred?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a literal cut and paste. I don't think any change was made to the actual text. That, well, I didn't make any changes to it, I believe. I think it was just cut and pasted. Because that is scroll down here. Yeah, yeah, yep, that was just picked up and moved. Because that makes more sense. That was kind of talking about, because, you know, when you talk about hazard trees in the context of SMP or critical areas, it's because, yes, it's a hazard, but it's also in a critical area and therefore there's some language on how you deal with that. So we put that in chapter four hundred, which is the general regulations. And it, it comes after all the information about buffers and reduction and reconfiguration of buffers and all the consideration of critical areas and all that stuff. So that, that was a suggestion from ecology to, to move that. So.
Good enough. Thank you.
Okay. What's next in one forty-five? And not. Okay, get down to industrial development, section nineteen six hundred one fifty. And I did have some, some, did some digging on this since our last meeting and had some thoughts for you. So currently, according to the text here in this chapter, industrial uses in the shoreline jurisdiction would only be permitted in the urban conservancy and the shoreline residential jurisdictions, right? And it says it's a cup for both of those. The table up above, or when I took hold of this document, the table did not say that. Actually, I think the table showed it being prohibited in shoreline residential. And so I changed the table to match the text because the text controls over the table. And that brought up some questions from citizens about, well, where and why and how would you allow industrial uses in the shoreline residential develop in designation? So I went back and did some digging on that. So the, going back to the inventory and characterization document and the work that was done back in, you know, twenty thirteen, that included a review of the zoning at the time and also existing shoreline uses at the time. The inventory and characterization notes those areas that are, that have industrial zoning or are, you know, industrially developed. And so the, the said report, which took that work and then created the proposed shoreline environment designations, that notes which areas were designated urban conservancy and makes, and one of the criteria of those is if it's an area that is in an industrial or commercial area of more intense rural development. And so that work was done and, and, you know, is the foundation of the SMP itself. However, when you go back to what state law says, you know, just to boil it down, basically, and in the natural said, it's essentially should not be allowed is what, what the WACs say. For rural conservancy, it should only be allowed for like low intensity water oriented industrial uses in the limited instances where they have been located in the past or at unique sites in rural communities that possess shoreline conditions and services to support the use. In the urban conservancy, again, it's, that designation could be appropriate in areas where you have limited area of more intense rural development or lammert, you know, of industrial area. And then for shoreline residential, the WACs actually, they're silent about industrial issue. They don't say anything about accommodating industrial is, or uses. And in fact, the purpose of the shoreline residential designation per ecology is to accommodate residential development and pertinent structures that are consistent with, with the RCWs. And an additional purpose is to provide appropriate public access and recreational uses. So looking at all that, looking at the questions we got from citizens, I also talked to ecology. I talked to Sarah Castle and her thoughts were, you know, industrial uses may not be appropriate or, or are not appropriate in the shoreline residential area. And in fact, they may be more appropriate in the rural conservancy versus the urban conservancy per the allowances that are in state law, because those urban conservancy areas are going to be closer to residential development or may already be developed residentially themselves. And that is, you know, an obvious conflict within industrial use. So I think there's some work and consideration that should happen in this section. And I wanted to bring these issues to your attention. And, and, you know, have the planning commission kind of chew on that and whether you want to consider prohibiting new industrial uses in the shoreline residential, or whether we should potentially allow them in rural conservancy because there is an allowance in the, the WAC and urban conservancy there, you know, there's, there is also a consideration. So this does not quite match what the allowances would be in state law. And so I wanted to bring that to your attention and, you know, leave that where it is for now in your, in your lap, but we can all work through it. So I'll turn it back over to you.
You want input on that now?
Absolutely. Yeah. I mean, now is we're here and we're talking about it. I think it would be helpful because I think it would be helpful to clarify before the public hearing draft because it isn't in inconsistency.
I mean, I, I think in urban conservancy and shoreline residential, it ought to be prohibited unless known.
The way that, the way that Sarah outlined it, as you just reported, sounds pretty reasonable to me.
Yeah. So the urban conservancy designation does, according to the, the WACs, right? It does make allowance for industrial uses. And again, it's, it's, you know, where it's going to be, and then planning commission can put sideboards on things like where is it appropriate and, you know, like, like you've alluded to, does the underlying zoning allow it? That's, that is something that's in the development standards down below. So, you know, you can look at the permit requirements, and this is just saying, could I even do it in this environment? Well, yes or no, or what's the permit, right? And then the development standards down below give you more details, you know, regulations on that. So, you know, I think that's, it's appropriate to look at it there. You know, which designation is it appropriate in? And then what are the standards you want to apply to it? Yeah. So I could, you know, I think I could work on that, you know, for the public hearing draft. But yeah, absolutely want to hear your, your feedback on that. Yeah.
So I guess my only concern with prohibiting it is we don't have the actual zoning regulations in front of us with maps. So I would hate to say, you know, something's zoned for something. And then because it sits in a, in a specific environmental designation in shorelines, now you can't do what you're zoned for.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. I think that's, and that is definitely a part of this whole analysis. And I started going down the rabbit hole with this. The way this first started was based on the development standards below, we say that, you know, if you aren't zoned for industry, it's a non-starter, right? You have to both be zoned for industry and you have to be in one of these environment designations that would allow it. So I went to the zoning code and, and looked at, there, there are fourteen or fifteen different zoning designations that underlie these areas that are proposed to be shoreline residential and started looking through the code. Very quickly realized that was going to spiral out because our zoning code does not have this neat list of things that are considered industry. It's, it's by actual use. And so to carve that out and try to go through and figure out which uses would potentially be industry and where they would be allowed was just going to be extremely time consuming. So I wanted to bring this conversation back to you guys and get direction on that. But yeah, you're right, Scott. I mean, that's, that is absolutely a concern and something to think about. Would this be preempting that activity? And does state law do that? You know, where the shoreline residential said if it, if the proposal there is not to, or if that designation is not supposed to accommodate those uses per the WAC, then making sure that those designations were applied correctly, right? That's the whole theory behind the, the inventory characterization work is that areas that had a lot of the industry should not be, should not have been designated shoreline environment or shoreline residential. So. Yeah.
There a reason for making, is there a reason for making our designations more restrictive than the WAC?
Uh, well, I, I'm trying to just make sure that the planning commission has the information uh, about what is permitted and then what the draft says, you know, so that you can make those, those decisions. Um, I think, you know, that would be a call from the planning commission, you know, given all the information, if you wished to go beyond what is a requirement of state law and there's no other law prohibiting that, you know, and there's justification for it. I mean, that's, that's the work the planning commission is doing is tailoring this document based on your vision within the parameters of, of state law.
Can you send us that information you just read us from Sarah?
Yeah. And I'm just, I just was, uh, I'm reading off notes that I typed up based on, I had a phone call with her about this, so I don't have an email from her on this issue, but um, I could summarize this, um, if that's something the planning commission is interested in. It's just, it's a, something that needs to be put to bed because uh, I have a hunch, we may get comments about that. If this, if this goes forward with allowing industrial uses in shoreline residential, that is not, it appears to be inconsistent with the WAC. Uh, but then that also that other nugget was brought to my attention of, you know, perhaps the rural conservancy could be more appropriate for industry and the WAC does allow that. We are currently saying no. But the WAC does make allowances for that in limited circumstances.
If, if we.
Do you want for you to just put together a brief synopsis listing pros and cons for this?
Yeah, that, that's fine. And um, I, I didn't expect we would completely solve this issue tonight, but you know, direction for the planning commission, from the planning commission is to um, come up with some options that could be listed as options for planning commission in the next version of this draft to get you, to give you another chance to chew on it. I could do that. And that might be, that might make sense to do it that way.
Well, we, uh, i- if we do make any kind of decisions about this, there's, is there, we're going to have to uh, define industrial use somehow, whether we do that by
Yeah.
identifying it through the zones or we do it some other way, but that, that'll happen, won't it?
And that was, uh, that was part of my problem when I was trying to do the analysis here was, uh, the SMP does define in, in industry, but you know, when you go back to the zoning code, it's not, it's not clear. And there are different uses that are, that are permitted in different zones. It's a whole big table, right? But it's not they, they're not marked as industry or not. So you have to kind of know which uses would be considered industry and which, which wouldn't be.
Who would you be? Who would be the person that made that decision?
Well, that's, that's, so that goes back to your point of the definitions, right? It would, it would be up to staff making the, the interpretation that whatever use that someone is proposing falls under industrial development. And um, you know, if you, I don't want to flip back now. Um, but right, I could if you want me to, but uh, in, industry is defined up above in the document. We took a stab at it so that if someone is proposing something, um, you know, at the, at the development counter, you know, we have the tools in this document to figure out where it belongs. But you know, yeah.
Would be easier to say what it isn't, like it isn't residential?
I think the way that it's defined, it hopefully would already, you know, kind of parse that out or, or make that piece clear. Um, but I, maybe, I don't know. I, again, I don't have the, I don't have it off the top of my head what the definition is. I just know that we, I just know that there is one. Uh, but I also know that uh, there isn't one in the WAC, so that's. So I'm going to make a note in here to draft options um, for any commission consideration.
There is a definition for industrial development.
Right.
One fifty-four ten.
Yeah.
Anyone want to read that if they've got it handy?
Yeah, it says, uh, facilities for processing, manufacturing and storing finished or partially finished goods. Heavy vehicle dispatch and maintenance facilities and similar facilities.
Okay.
Processing, manufacturing, storing, finishing or assembling. And uh, shipping off heavy equipment.
Oh, so if I make widgets in my garage in my lakefront house, you, I'd be stopped from doing that.
I mean, I would have to look at whether it fits that, it's all of that characterization. Would we consider that industry? Would we consider that home-based business? Is that something the SMP would even talk about if you have an existing, existing, you know, structure and you, and you're not doing any additional construction. I think there might be other parts of the zoning code that would potentially apply there. Yeah, I think this I, is more for larger scale type uses.
I think there's a definition somewhere, maybe not, probably not the SMP, but the difference between a hobby and I'll say a real business.
Yeah.
You can throw that into the definition, not to include
Right.
uh, uses that would be considered a home permitted at a, as a home-based occupation or a hobby or some, something like that.
Yeah.
Um, sure. Yeah. Uh, let me write that down. Rather make it all in one place.
Actually, Jennifer, that was pretty good. It is what is not. And that's a good way to this, to define it.
Yeah, it's a slippery slope. It's hard to include everything you can think of, especially because our industry changes over time. But to give them a better description of kind of the intent is always helpful to those who have to implement this down the road.
I wasn't like.
And I think, yeah, there, and there's, there's got to be, and maybe it lives in the, the code that regulates the home-based industry piece, but I think the part of the the reason that this is here and the reason that we're looking at the different environments is to avoid conflict in the shoreline, right? So we want to make sure that whatever we land on or what, I keep saying we, whatever you land on, um, you know, does not promote conflict, right? So, um, and I think that's what the, that's what the development standards are going to be used for in our zoning code is saying where, where and when you can do a, a home-based industry and what that needs to look like. And there's going to be limits on the traffic that it generates and all those sorts of things to make sure that it's not inconsistent with the underlying zone. And the same goes in the shoreline and where you want to allow that based on the development patterns. And that's where this whole issue was raised is if you have a whole already developed residential shoreline that is designated shoreline residential and rightfully so, is that the area that you want to be talking about proposing new industrial uses? And, you know, I think that was a, a, a good question to ask.
Would, would upland processing of aquaculture be an industrial use or would that be a farming activity?
Hmm, that's a good question. Uh, I don't know off the top of my head. I, well, aquaculture is separate from agriculture, uh, specifically in the SMA. They're two different, two different things. Um, so I, I think, are you, are you asking, would it be, would it be industry or would it be aquaculture if it was upland, right?
Well, I guess my concern is if we have a, an oyster farmer that um, pulls his bags off the beach and starts clearing his oysters out of his bags on the beach, is that use going to be protected or is it going to be prohibited if he's in the wrong SED?
We could go back and look at the aquaculture section or I could go back and look at that. Uh, I think there's some allowance in there and, or definition for where it applies that, um, and now that I'm thinking about it, I'm thinking the aquaculture regulations are meant to apply, you know, like down on the beach. And if you were doing processing upland, it would be potentially standards like this that would apply. Um, that would require me to go back and clarify slash dive on that to, to verify. But I think, you know, the intent is that if you're doing aquaculture, that there can be some, some manner of, um, I, I would say organizing for lack of a better word and using it very generally, uh, for, for, you know, some manner of work that can occur on the, on the tidelands, but then, you know, not all of it, right? Some of it does occur further up. So I don't know, I would have to research that a little bit more. So is that something folks want?
It should be clear. I mean, it should be, I don't think it's industrial. Um, the processing of, of gooey ducks.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that we let them put a, a cannery right on the shoreline in, you know, a shoreline residential area, but if something as simple as emptying your, your bags would then be prohibitive, I, I, I wouldn't be on board for that.
I don't think it would be. I mean, I think something like that, and I, I don't want to speak out of turn without going back and looking at it, but it seems to me that would be more under the umbrella of aquaculture versus industry. If you were going to put your um, cannery or your sorting facility or whatever, or you know, your hatchery, whatever it is on the shoreline, then you'd be triggering this section.
Andrew, I agree with you. However, remember you're a good guy. And there's a lot of attorneys there that will like to make a lawsuit of, out of anything. So maybe if we can clarify so we can leave the
Yeah.
Little guys are not doing a lot of industry out there. They're just doing their, the small operations. If we can clarify that, that would actually eliminate a lot of problems.
Sure. I, I think, I think I can do that. And given the, you know, given that aquaculture is a very high profile topic within the SMP, I think all the clarification and and information we can provide, uh, the more the better, right? The more clarification, the better. Okay.
Thank everybody happy, us, you and everybody.
Starting on the beach covered under aqua.
And Andrew, I, I don't want to seem like I'm beating you up because I'm not really trying to beat you up, but the bottom line is there, there's a lot of unethical people there that will try to skirt every little inch of the regulations to get away with something that is unethical. Help the guys that are trying to do the right thing and then uh, really curtail the ones that I want, want to operate in the periphery of it. And that's all I'm trying to say.
I mean, I think for all those reasons you've stated about the, the, the utility of having clear concise language, I mean, it, it has multiple benefits. So that's a point well taken. And it is recorded for posterity. Okay. Anything else in, uh, uh, section one fifty, which is industrial development?
Section B, Andrew, uh, number four. Would you explain that to me, please?
Okay, let me move your faces around so I can read the whole sentence. Hang on. So, and this may also go back to the WACs. Um, I know in those instances where you're allowing industrial or commercial use of the shoreline, public access is supposed to be a component of that unless there are mitigating circumstances. Um, that would prohibit that, like it's, it's a hazard to have people getting to the shoreline amongst areas where you're driving heavy machinery, for example.
Um, it's, it's pretty much straight out of the wax. I'm just looking at that right now. Um, talking about uh, public access.
Yeah.
Should be, you know, encouraged. Um, except when it's part of a mixed use project that includes wire dependent uses of, you know, it, it has a lot of the same language and limitations that looks like we've put in here.
And there are other provisions in chapter four hundred regarding public access that could apply here. Uh, I don't know without going and looking at them, but we make, there are other considerations where you know, just because you couldn't do public access on site doesn't necessarily get you out of that requirement entirely. You may potentially have to provide it offsite or do some, something else. Um, but you know, this is clearly saying, you, you know, you don't have to do it on that site if, if it's going to be, you know, a hazard to life or property.
Who is it that decides what significant interference is?
I think that would be up to the applicant to demonstrate and for the approval authority, which is the county to um, to make that determination. This is saying you'd have to consider doing that, um, unless, you know, you can demonstrate that you don't have to based on some extenuating circumstance.
I can add to that a little bit, um, Andrew.
Mm-hmm.
Bottom line, if it's a safety hazard, then you cannot do it. If it's going to impede your business from operating, can't do it. And that's the, the, in a nutshell, the, the main criteria for that. So. L and I has very, very similar rules for what is feasible and what will be an impediment for a business. Uh, when they have to deal with the safety regulation. So it's pretty standard in state statutes.
And Jennifer, uh, I, I don't know if you still have that WAC open. Um, is this pretty much, is this verbatim, number four? Sorry to put you on the spot there. Um, cause my thought there is this says that industrial development must consider incorporating public access as mitigation. Uh, it doesn't say that they have to have to do it. Um, and it, this is basically saying if you're mitig, if you are having impacts to shoreline, obviously mitigation is going to have to be required, full stop. This is saying as part of your mitigation that you have to do, you must consider public access as part of mitigation.
Yeah, here's the WAC master program should require that industrial development consider incorporating public access as mitigation for impacts to shoreline resources and values. Unless public access cannot be provided in a manner that does not result in significant interference with operations or hazards to life or property as provided in, and they cite it under WAC.
So as part of whatever mitigation is going to be required for that use, this is saying that you, you have to consider public access. Um, unless, you know, what she said, it, uh,
What the state says.
Right. What Jennifer said, the state said.
It, it makes perfect sense. You will consider it unless there's a problem. And then so you have to evaluate the problem and if it's a problem, then you can't. That's why I said should and not shall. And that's pretty clear.
Well.
Do it unless there, yeah.
So it says that jurisdictions should, um, Jennifer, can you, sorry, can you read that one more time? Your master program should. If you still have it open, um.
I was muted. I'm so sorry. Master programs should require that industrial development consider incorporating public access as mitigation for impacts. It's kind of the same thing as is written here.
Well, that, that's the distinction I wanted to make since we brought that up, the should versus shall. Shall is shall, right? Shall is you must do this, you have to do this. Should is you shall unless you have a compelling local cir, local circumstance to not do it. So even though it's not a shall in the WAC, it is essentially the same thing unless we have, you know, a really compelling reason to not do that. And that, that, that goes throughout all of, all of the WACs I, as I understand it. I'm picturing the replies that ecology has shown on that topic and can certainly bring that back if that's something people are interested in, but I just didn't want to let that go without the clarification.
In reality, I think it's a moot point because if you have an industrial development on a shoreline, it's going to be too hazardous for people to access it anyway.
Yeah.
So. I can't think of any industrial development on a shoreline that would.
I think, I think where you see that is like when the EPA or one of the big power companies has some, something near a dam, they do access to, to the public. They build a little park down there or something like that.
Bingo.
I also think of some of the canneries that you drive through on your way out to like Long Beach, right? That have the decks that go out, you know, amongst the machinery and stuff, but it's a separate, you know, you're on a gated deck and you can walk in and buy oysters and whatever. Um, so that's maybe another example. So. Okay. All right. Anything else here in, uh, industrial uses? Otherwise, go ahead and move into, um, 600 155, which is mining.
I, I'm having a problem wrapping my brain around some of this mining stuff because in Thurston County, the mining that does happen, uh, those shorelines are created by the mining. It's not like they started mining the shorelines. They, you know, the green pit and the trans altapits are, are over 20 acres because they were designed that way by mining, not because they found a 20 acre pond and started mining in it. And so when we see stuff about, you know, like number four, reclamation of disturbed shoreline shall be required to provide appropriate ecological function. So when they close down, when they, when they're doing, closing down their mines at some point or another, they're going to have to maintain these manmade shorelines and not just let it return to nature.
Uh, I wonder if this is more about new mining in shoreline areas versus those. So from my understanding is that, you know, yes, when you're doing a gravel, gravel mine and over time you create this giant lake, right? Which is like a window into the groundwater essentially. That is not considered a shoreline until such time that all mining operations have ceased. Um, and then you, and then after that, after all that's done, uh, that's when you potentially designate them as shorelines. I think this is saying if you are a shoreline and you're doing additional, or you are a shoreline and you're proposing mine.
I would love it if they're not considered shorelines yet, but I want to think that on the inventory and characterization map, which I know had a mining designation, but the mining designation has now been converted to a rural conservancy, I believe. So if it shows as a rural conservancy SED, that would mean that it is a shoreline. We do consider it a shoreline that is regulated.
Right. But only because those areas are no longer being actively mined. There's a, there's a, a disconnect there, right? If, if it is, if it's over 20 acres and it's actively being mined and it was a product of manmade activity, I don't believe we consider those shorelines. It's only once the mining operation has been completed that they then become.
Then why did we assign them an SED already?
I don't know that. Are you talking about the mining SED or?
It's not a mining SED. We, when we got rid of the mining SED, we converted those to rural conservancy, I believe.
Right.
And so if we gave them an SED, that implies that they're shoreline.
And are you, so you're saying that, and I'd have to go back and look, but, uh, you're saying that that rural conservancy SED was applied to mining lakes, for lack of a better word, that are currently still active?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, that, that I'd have to look at because I, that was not how I understood it was supposed to work, right? Is that, uh, and I think prior to, there was a time when those areas weren't even, weren't ever going to be considered shorelines. I think that was a change in one of the state laws, um, that brought those in. So I don't, I don't, I don't know. I would have to go and, uh, and I can certainly look at that.
All right.
Bring clarification on that.
Well, I'm, I'm sure if we don't look at it, Trans Alta's lawyers will.
Well, Eric, if you're talking about the Trans Alta pit up Skookum Chuck Valley, that has already been converted away from a mine. It's no longer mine.
The one that's down lower is the, well, that's actually the two that are down lower that, that were applied SEDs are still being, are still active. From what I understand, when I talk to the Trans Alta guys.
I wish they'd talked to me. Okay.
Call them. You want their number?
Well, let me, for now, let me go ahead and I can go verify with, um, with our GIS analyst, uh, if there are any current mines that are, were given.
The, the green pit that's just north of it out of, I think it's out of Tono. It had a SED as well, and it's still an active mine.
Okay.
But this section here says where mining is proposed. So in the following designations. So it's a, it's one of the start of mine in the natural or the rural or the.
I was looking in the development standards.
Yeah, but I, doesn't the development standards then apply to A? Doesn't B apply to A?
Well, I would think that it says that when it's talking about reclamation, that means activity that's going to happen at a future date.
Which I think is all part of the permit.
Or the reclamation plan from, yeah.
Yeah. So this is not, I don't think this is too intended to apply to ongoing mining operations.
All right. Well, if we can dig into it a little bit, I'd feel better about the world.
We had a long discussion about mining and I'm trying to remember whether that was in the, the comp plan or in here.
Yeah, you guys spent a lot of time with that with Maya on the mineral resource lands.
I remember having these conversations with Brad Murphy was when I first started asking about the mines. And I want to think they pulled out. Well, they pulled out the SED, but it's not like the mines were gone. They pulled out the mining SED, but I think that they converted those all to rural conservancy.
My recollection is that if a mine is operating, it's, it's outside of the SMP until it is reclaimed. They actually have to go through the reclamation process that was approved when they build it.
I hope that's the way it is, but let's, if we can, if we can get some clarification on that, that'd be great.
Yeah. It can, yeah, I will noted and I will clarify that, um, because again, that's what you're describing. It's not how I understood it to work and I want to.
I hope I'm wrong. I hope I'm wrong.
Yeah, sure. Okay. Yep. I will absolutely look at that. Um, and I have marked it down. Okay. And just to be clear, make sure I'm marking appropriately, appropriately, just looking at, are there any current mining operations that are mapped as shorelines in the proposed update? So you should be one or you should be the other. You should not be both is, is my understanding. So I will, I will see if that is the case. Okay. Anything else in this, this section? Not. Keep scrolling and we'll get into everybody's favorite topic, mooring structures and activities. Section 19 601 60, uh, the planning commission did a lot of work on this section when it comes to the, well, excuse me, when it comes to these uses up in the, um, the land use matrix table. So, um, I copied and pasted the work you did down here. It's going to look different, but essentially, uh, I'm going to take every, this is a snippet from the table from above. Y'all remember working through this and looking at lakes and marine. So when you see the public hearing draft, this language up in A here where it's just saying, you know, which designations, you can and cannot, and how you do that, uh, it will more reflect what's in that table. So I, I copied it down for now, but, um, the next version of the draft will show, um, show it in text format. So I just wanted to clarify that. Um, and I anticipate we'll have some more discussion as we move through the development standards. Cause that's the last time we revisited this. The planning commission was looking at different permit requirements for different environments. And so now we're getting into the actual development standards and I imagine we're going to have more conversation on that. So I will open it up to planning commission. Um, why don't we start with, um, section A here, which is the environment designations permit requirements? Is there anything anyone has there?
Well, we are, you've got the note there. So we're, we're in the, we're going to consider a dock in a natural area.
Yeah. Yes. And that's, um, just to, to again, to, because there have been questions about how these things are phrased. Uh, what you see in here when it's called option for public hearing, that's, that's what I have termed it based on my capture of planning commission's discussion. If you want that to read differently or, or you want this document to look different as we go into hearing, definitely let me know. But anything that's in here like this as an option for public hearing is something that planning commission has called out as wanting more feedback or want to draw the public's attention to specifically. Okay. Um, but yeah, that will be in there. Um, and like I said, this stuff here in the table will, um, be more of a narrative format up above. I just need to figure out how to do that and how that looks. Okay. So move on to letter B under 160.
B six, Andy, seems to be a very complex sentence. Could you clarify and simplify that one?
Possibly. I can take a look here. Hmm hmm. Yeah. And this has been touched a couple of times through the processes. You can tell by the editing. Um. Yeah. Uh, it could potentially be rephrased. So, you know, the, if a residential mortgage demonstration at existing facilities are not adequate or feasible, uh, and then this would mean, you know, and then kind of restructure it that way. That would be a way to do that, um, possibly.
I think it's number six is really for the marine environment. It's really not applicable on lakes.
Are there any freshwater marinas at all or freshwater mortgage facilities on like Black Lake or Summit Lake?
There may not be, but there could be potentially in the future, right? Someone could propose one under, under the SMP and then, you know, we wouldn't want every time, we wouldn't. Yeah. Um.
As soon as a public mortgage showed up, then all dock construction on single parcels would end.
Unless there, it was, it's not adequate potentially. I mean, that, that's how it is currently written. And I think that goes back to, you may not find, uh, you may not, and this specific language in the WAC, but it goes back to the language that is guiding jurisdictions to try to limit the number of shoreline modifications in number and extent. That's my guess of why this is here, but that's why we're, we're here and you're here to, um, mull this over.
Would, would it help to make that, to break that apart into two different items, make one apply to lakes and one marine?
I think, I think so. Um, cause there, in both cases, it's talking about residential mortgage. And I think the way this text has changed, it reflects the last time planning commission looked at this um, and tried to differentiate between those two environments. So in the interest of creating clean, clear language, um, that could certainly help. So is that, um, what does planning commission think about that? Is that something you want me to do here?
I would like to see it separated.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. That's, I think that's a pretty easy fix. Oops.
Andy, how did we decide on the, the standard being 10 driving miles?
Um, I don't know. That, that goes back to before my time, um, with this. So I'm not sure, but I think it's intended to strike the balance between not driving too far and, you know, um.
I mean, I'm trying to picture in my head the county, but when I think of, of saltwater shorelines and I think of the marina in downtown Olympia and the marine out at Boston Harbor, um, mo- mo- most of the rest of the shoreline parcels are going to be within 10 driving miles of that, aren't they? Except for maybe out towards Steamboat, but Steamboat's got a marina too, doesn't it?
Uh, there's a private one. I don't know if there's a public one out there.
Yeah, it's, it's for the carline beach residents only.
Yeah.
Well, I, I obviously have nothing to calculation, but every shoreline in the county quite possibly could be within 10 driving miles of a marina. So we would, this would effectively stop all saltwater, single family resident dock development.
Whoa.
Well, and again, the intent would be to honor the guiding language in SMA to reduce, you know, the modifications in number and extent. It, it's an attempt to do that. Um, if it's not quite right, you know, or planning commission wants to propose a different standard.
This, this seems more like a, not an attempt to reduce, but a prohibition.
Right.
Alternative proposal?
I don't have an alternative, but I'm going to think about it.
Yeah. Cause fair, because again, I don't think, I, I, I don't think you're going to find that in the WAC specifically. So, you know, there, there is potentially some ability for, or I'm not even potentially, I, I'm fairly certain there's an ability for you all to propose something different if you would like to. So marinate on it. As, as you know, we're not, we're, we're not done in total. So we can certainly come back to this at, at any point.
Hey, Andrew, uh, Rowell here, I'm chiming in on this one. Yeah, I think we just opened up a can of worms here, but it's not a bad can of worms. I think we can probably clarify it a little bit because nobody ever assumes that we're going to have inlet everywhere like Fugue Sound is. So most people don't think about that, you know, people think the shoreline, oh, you're going to ocean shores. Our shorelines actually encompass just about all of Thurston County. So yeah, we need to be a little bit more creative with this language and, uh, at the same time, still maintain the intent of what they were trying to do. And that's, uh, and I think that's where everybody wants to go, including yourself. So I think it's wonderful. Good point. Um, it's not necessarily kind of worms. Okay. We can make lemonade out of lemon. Thanks.
Okay. All right. What's next? We're in section 160.
Number eight. Um, my note says remove it. Let me read it. Oh, that's the part about getting a signature from your neighbor that you won't build one with you. We had talked about not requiring that.
Um. Yeah, potentially, um, if I missed that, I apologize, but I don't, you know, it's, it's still in here because I didn't come away from a meeting with, with the clear direction to take it out apparently. Um, but you know, you can certainly discuss that now.
Yeah, we talked about that before and I had thought that our, that our agreement was we were going to take that out because it can cause problems with the neighbors or.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you have a thoroughly neighbor that won't sign one way or the other, then you can't get it, you can't move forward.
Well, you can, well, you can.
I think, and somewhere else, somewhere else in here, we, we, we did talk about, uh, okay, that's alternative mortgage. I thought there was somewhere else where we may have talked about the joint thing, but I could, okay. So yeah, I, I, I am remembering something about that. Okay. Um, and again, I, I do not believe, and again, I, before I completely strike it, I will go make sure it's not from the WAC or something like that, but yeah, we could look at that. It seems like, okay, to me, it seems like something's missing here. Like there was some other standard that mentioned that you had to do it and, you know, unless you couldn't, and then you'd have to do the agreement, but, okay. So let's just look at, looking at just this. The, yeah, there's a couple of folks who want to strike this and yeah, that's something planning commission wants. Is that something, uh, the majority is interested in, then I will go ahead and mark that for deletion. So I think I see Scott and Eric and Doug.
Yeah, somewhere in here, it says they're encouraged to do that.
Right. And I think that's what we took out somewhere I, or excuse me, well, I took it out at your direction. I, I think somewhere else it was adjusted, but this is still here. So.
Yeah.
If, so I will look at. I'm just going to say, um, strike unless, you know, uh, this is requirement of, of the WAC. And I'm not sure that it is. So, okay.
Was that from CH? I think that was from CH where it tries to encourage people to share dogs.
Yeah. Okay. Right. Yeah. Okay. And so, yeah, and I do remember we talked about this. So then that other piece goes back to acknowledging that. Hmm. Okay. But yeah, I mean, obviously if you have a neighbor who's not cooperating, um, it's, you're not going to get that. But it makes sense. I mean, H to me makes sense because if, if you're going to do that and you're going to have a joint structure. structure, you need to have some sort of document that enforces how all parties are going to use that and all of that, because, you know, 10 years down the line, different people could own both houses or both properties and, you know, it's different people wanting to know what the rules are.
Well, H is really for the development of two or more homes. So it's, it's all going in at the same time, typically with the same builder, I mean, so.
Potentially.
So that's what that's for. Um, but I want to go back to nine.
Hmm, up above.
Uh, B9.
Yeah, uh huh.
Um, it says when maps or observations indicate, shouldn't it be where current science indicates?
That's the, where observation comes in. So this is saying, if we know that, you know, doing the, the over the desk review or office review, that potentially those habitats are there, that could trigger a survey, or if a staff happens to be out on site and observes that those habitats could be present, they could also require it. Uh, and you know, a good example of that would be wetlands, right? Where we have wetlands mapped and we, to the best of our ability, know where they are and know when they, they need to become a permitting consideration. But potentially staff is out in the field reviewing the project for whatever other purposes they need to, and they observe that looks like a wetland to me, you know, it, if it's on the ground and it exists, it is protected whether or not it is mapped, and this language is an attempt to reflect that.
Okay.
TV. C, K.
Hmm.
Kind of wondering, I don't, I don't know, you know, that much about the wood and everything, but it says, you know, when it talks about Creosote and all these different types of treated wood, and then the last sentence, these types of treated wood shall only be used for above water structural framing. At that point, even if it's above water, does it still, you know, with all the rain we get, does it still, does that stuff still wash out into the water or am I just thinking wrong here? I'm wondering if that's still an appropriate use.
I mean, I think there's a potential for that. I don't, but yeah, there, I would, I would think that there is a potential for that. And again, this is another piece of this language that I don't know where that came from. It was intended to, you know, to keep toxins out of the water. This as written strikes the balance of potentially a lot making more allowances for different materials above the water versus below. Whether or not that is appropriate, that, that is totally in your purview to discuss.
Well, even in the next HRJKL, it says that uh, existing deteriorated treated wood shall be replaced with alternative materials such as untreated wood steel and concrete. So I mean, it feels contradictory to me.
Hmm.
Well, common practice is above water where it doesn't go underwater, you can use treated.
Okay. You don't think Doug did that, that stuff kind of washes off or rinses off and?
Well, you don't want to use it in a decking, it won't be allowed in a decking material. So you can't use it, you can't use treated wood for the decking of, of a dock.
So it's only for the framing as in to preserve over time, the structure, the structural elements.
Only the structural elements, so you just have beams two by six, so there's not a ton of it. Typically they're laid in their vertically, so intuitively, I, I think they feel from a science standpoint that it's okay.
I mean, if you guys on the lake are comfortable with it, I'm good.
Yes.
I mean, again, there's the, there, think about the balance between different elements here, right, of preserving shorelines versus accommodating uses and this is right, allow use and try to minimize impact. That's how I look at it.
Yes.
So somebody has their TV on or something and is not muted, could we please?
Yeah.
It's appeared by her.
Yeah, and as chair or host, you may be able to mute her screen from your desk or from your screen. Yep, there it goes. Great.
Probably took care of it.
All right.
Under C, uh, B and E, there's a statement that says provide the minimum size requirement needed.
Hang on a second.
You know, what does, how do you define that? And
Where, where are you finding, sorry, I think I'm, I went off the page here.
Under C, B. C, I'm sorry, C1B.
Oh, got it. There we go. There it is. Okay. Hmm.
And in, in the last sentence says the minimum size requirement needed.
Hmm.
How, how do you define the minimum size requirement? It's also stated in in E also.
Right. Yes, and I think letter, so letter B, I believe, when, because that's an awkward phrase, minimum size requirement needed. That letter B is referring to letter E, right? Letter E is the, is as a standalone is saying, overwater structure shall be constructed to the minimum size necessary to meet the needs of the use, including docks, um, providing additional standards of the chapter met. So, that comes back to what the applicant needs to demonstrate, and you could look at the application requirements, there's something in there, going to be something in there about the debate, dimensions, and so you have to, you know, make your proposal and it's, you know, essentially say this is why we're doing it, right? This is, this is what the intent of this development is, um, and this is giving the county the ability to, you know, limit it to the side, minimum size that you need to get, get done what you're proposing to do.
Yeah, so you just have to propose which, what, what you need it for and why you need it that size. But isn't there a, uh, for a dock, isn't there a maximum limit on freshwater of like 58 feet?
Um, there might be if we look further down in the document. I know we put limits on
Found that anywhere in the document.
Well, I think the current SMP does have those standards.
It's 80 feet.
It's 80 feet. Is that, is that in here, Eric?
Uh, I just remember that from a hearing examiner meeting I went to.
Okay.
I don't remember it being here anywhere, Andrew. It could be, but.
It could be, it could be, I'm not sure, um, and you know, it would seem, well, if it is or it isn't, it would seem like this is a great place to put something like that, you know, it shall be the minimum size and shall not exceed X feet in any instance, you know, that if, if, if that's something, if that is a development standard that is going to be in this document, you know, that would be a logical place to put those sorts of things together.
I guess one of the things I would like to be able to provide for is there are parcels that are on lakes that are shallow for a long distance. And so they need more than 58 feet to get to the four foot depth in order to park a boat on your dock.
Hmm.
So there, there are incidents, instant, whatever, times when a longer dock is necessary, and I don't think someone should have to jump through significant hoops to prove that. So I'd, I'd like to see some kind of a uh, phrase in here to for them to show why they need, need longer than 53 feet or 58 feet or whatever the, the length is that we want to set as a maximum.
I think if we had some sort of language that, that said that, that dock could be no longer than what is needed to maintain four feet of depth or three feet of depth, that would probably get us to where we need to be year around three feet of depth or something like that.
And perhaps that's something that would be different uh, uh, between the different environments, because you potentially are using different boats in these different shoreline environments.
Sure, and there's still going to be navigation issues that they would have to accommodate and all that kind of stuff too.
Hmm.
Because it actually says under the saltwater requirements for docks that, and floats that you have to, cannot ground out, float has to the tides. It has to maintain, I think it said three feet uh, water depth below the floats.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've heard from the Lawrence Lake folks before that, you know, 80 foot length dock is not going to touch the water many times of the year. We'll bring them all the way out to the middle of mud.
Yeah, I was trying to see if I could find anything in here real quickly. Um, okay, um, so yeah, I sensing some direction coming from planning commission. So what do we think about, or what do you think about Eric's statement about getting a certain length out to X number feet or whatever?
That's a good way to monitor it. I mean, to, I think.
Hmm.
It gives flexibility, but it doesn't set a blanket amount. I mean, well, it does, but it has to do with depth, so it's reasonable.
Right.
And the other consideration would be if you're in a situation where your two neighbors docks are 60 feet out, but it's deeper where you are, and you're close enough together that if you only had a 20 foot dock, you'd be in trouble.
Hmm.
So short enough to be a three feet of water might not have.
I, I think there, there is another provision in there somewhere that does, it's kind of like the how close you can get to the buffer with building your house, how far out in the water can you build your dock and you can do a mean average of those on both sides of you and there, there's something like that in our current SMP. I don't know if it's in this proposed SMP. So if your neighbor goes out to 80 feet, you can go out to 80 feet.
Yeah, I don't remember any of that in here.
I don't, might not. Sorry, Eric, what did you say?
It might not be in the proposed one. Now that I'm thinking of it, I probably have the two, the current and the proposed mixed up, but if it's in the current, we should probably translate it over to, um, over to the proposed too.
Um, okay, I'm trying to think of, I'm trying to capture exactly what you've said and reflect it correctly. Um, but what I'm gathering is, you know, include language about length of docks, um, that ties to allowing for appropriate depth for mooring essentially, so three to four feet, right?
Right.
Okay, so that's, that's one. Uh, okay, and then this other piece about essentially how, how does, are there any other allowances? Or the length of a dock, you know, to reflect your neighbors have, you know, have them and making sure that you can, because I, I think if I'm understanding you correctly, if you're in the lot in the middle and your neighbors on either side have a dock, the concern is that those could be so close together that you, your boat cannot be moored in between, that your dock would need to be the same length or longer to enable you to moor the boat. Okay. Um, so yeah, I, without, without reading this stem to stern right now, I don't, I don't know if that's already here, but I can make the note to look at it. Um, okay. Let me do that.
If we're feet.
I think what Eric said was, would be the average of the two docks next to you.
Hmm. Yeah. Yeah, and is there, okay, is there an averaging? Okay. I've marked that down to look at, and again, we might even come across it as we scroll through here, but, um, I'm just not, I'm not recalling that that's in here. That could be something that's in the current SMP. Okay, uh, anything else in this section?
On N, uh, I, I really like the idea that people will be getting rid of the styrofoam floats on their docks. Uh, that, I think that's fantastic, but it, N would almost imply that that even if you replace a single board on your dock and it is floating on styrofoam, you'd have to pull the styrofoam out, and I think that might be, that might be asking for a lot. As much as I'd like to see the styrofoam out, telling people they gotta do it just because they want to paint their dock or replace the single board or something like that, that might be asking a lot.
Hmm. And we do make the difference between, so looking up above in L, talking about maintenance, that if you are doing maintenance and it exceeds 50% repair or replacement, then we're considering essentially a new dock.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that if we use that same standard here before you force somebody to get rid of their styrofoam would probably be appropriate. But I do like the encouragement to get rid of the styrofoam.
Okay, um, so what do other folks think about that piece?
Raul, I agree as well.
Okay. Um, all right, so all in favor, I'll go ahead and make that note. Okay, so during maintenance or repair and, okay. Tie this to 50%. Oh, above. Okay.
And then, then on O, really the water's got to be seven feet deep before I can use a pressure washer on my plastic dock. Is that a, is that a state requirement?
In water, listen. I don't, I'm not exactly sure what that's saying, that, that could potentially be doing things in the water versus pa- you know, pressure washing just the deck or, or the, you know, the dock boards.
Hmm.
Um,
I think that this one's trying to address actually uh, docks where you have, you might be spraying equipment, cleaning tractors or, you know, in industrial or commercial use, or even in a gooey duck where you might pressure wash some equipment. So you're knocking oils and, and junk into the water. Where it gets into trouble is it says ore structures.
So, well, and, and reading the rest of this, potentially it does, I mean, the last sentence makes me think that the whole section could, or the whole set, the whole section could apply to in or overwater, not just in the water, but over the water. So Eric, I see your
Yeah.
concern there. So I don't think that comes from the WAC.
Well, well, if you guys are all of a sudden going to tell me I can't, because my, my dock is rarely in seven feet and I like to pressure wash it, you know, a couple of times a year, and all of a sudden I can't do that, that's going to make me cranky.
Hmm.
But you know, it's, I think what we're trying to do here is keep pollutants out of the water, whether it's saltwater, marine environment and freshwater. And, and those pollutants are primarily, you know, you wash some equipment for your, like I said, getting oil and pieces.
No, and I'm, I'm fine with all that. That part, you know, I don't want to me, I'm not expecting to drive my tractor down onto my dock just to wash it off, but if I can't wash my dock off itself.
Right.
That's a different, that's a different issue.
So you need to look at some kind of wording that makes it differentiates that.
Yeah, and it's two, and it's two issues, right? The, the, the main issue in this section or the first issue is, it is talking about the substrate. It's, it's, you know, that pressure washing jet, right, could potentially scour the substrate underneath the dock uh, or adjacent to the dock. Um, and then as an issue on top of that, it's saying, you know, not, not pressure washing in or overwater if it's petroleum based product. So it's two different things. Yeah, I mean, I don't know exactly the origin of this, um, but you know, you can see the intent, right? There, why, why it's there is concerned about scour or toxin, but if it, the language is not appropriate, then that's what you're here to discuss. So is there a proposed to, those that'll change that in any way or?
Yeah, uh, Raul here, um, I'm thinking, what about if it's, um, unless it is part of a regular maintenance of the dock itself? Some, some language along those lines, because that would exclude everything else that's going to be a problem. But you just get in the moss and crap out of there. But you're just getting the moss and crap out of it, your dock, which is going to be everywhere. It's going to be in the dock, everything.
Yeah. And I think the, yeah, it's this, it's the structures in water less than seven feet deep that really is. I think the hang up here, right? Because that's, the dock would be the structure. A dock is not necessarily equipment or machinery, but a dock is a structure.
Can you pull out just the structure?
Potentially. I, yeah, I don't, again, I don't think that there is a specific, this is not going to tie back to a specific Mac, but it, you know. So I don't. I don't know if there is a.
Well, you know. Telling us that we don't do it, I'd like to at least pull out structures and. And maybe even consider where they got the seven or where the seven feet came from, how that number was. Decided on, but if if we pull out structures, so I can still pressure wash my dock, you, you won't hear any more complaints out of me. On that particular issue.
Right, and I'm, it makes sense, right? It makes sense that potentially to. Limit, I don't know, limit pressure washing to only. Maintaining a slip free surface on your dock. Maybe that makes sense. Okay, so Eric, Doug and Raul are in favor of of tinkering with that. Does anyone else want me to work on that?
The same, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Uh, Raul, I want to interject some thinking process here. Let's say you have a paint on the dock, right? And you do not pressure wash it, you're still going to erode all that paint in the dock eventually is going to go into the water. Everything in the dock is going to go end up in the water, whether you pressure wash it or not. So. Regular maintenance may prevent paint from becoming flaky because it deteriorates. So it may be beneficial to actually pressure wash it before it actually deteriorates, the paint to the point where it's actually flexing the water. So you see what I'm saying is like, actually. By trying to be so careful about it, we might be actually causing more harm. So, and I think that's what Eric is trying to allude to, and I think we're all on the same page in this one. Let's see if we can come up with something. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, everybody.
So I'm going to just, for now, just put in, remove the word structures. Structures. Intent is to allow. Pressure washing of dock itself as a maintenance activity. How's that sound?
Well stated.
Okay, great. I'm putting the intent there so that we remember, well, we, I remember what you have told me to do. So, okay. Great.
Going back to G. Number one, G. That really applies in the marine environment, right? So my suggestion, if it's. In a lake environment, we wouldn't. Using a single use moring structure is okay. We've already talked about that.
Yeah, and.
Environments, they don't want that. So I, my suggestion is either remove it or insert marine.
Okay. Who else has thought on that?
I agree with Doug.
You have, so he kind of threw out two different options there.
If we just limited it to to marine, I'd be happy.
Okay, so Doug and Eric, so the proposal would be to make letter G applicable only in the marine environment. What was the rest of the planning commission think about that?
I agree.
Anybody seen two boats tied up to one buoy?
Sorry?
No, no, that'd be ridiculous.
I, I agree with with the, with the lake piece, but also up above, buoys are before preferred over. Piers in the more, in the marine environment, so. To prohibit it doesn't seem like. The right way either. Maybe that whole, whole sentence goes out or something, but. It seems like we're contradicting ourselves in in F and this one here and G.
G says an exception for buoys.
Yeah, so basically this is saying. Buoys are preferred in the marine environment. But single use moring structure would be prohibited unless you could only do a joint use. So they're. Kind of two different things, but I know that, that, you know, planning commissioners had concerns about. Any of these requirements for demonstrating that joint uses is feasible or. Et cetera. So Jim, are you suggesting a different course of action?
No, thanks for the clarification. I, I reading it again, I see where.
So I am going to write down change to only apply to marine environment. Okay, so I'm also, okay, taking that down. I'm also looking at the clock. Do we have a, folks have a whole lot more in one sixty?
Yeah, there's some more, I would say let's stop at all where Eric gave the comments about seven feet. Pick it up, pick it up at. What is it? One P next time?
Okay, let me. Make that note then. I'm looking to the chairs, that.
Thank you, Andrew.
Great, okay. Well, I will make, I will note where we stopped and then we will pick it up. So thank you, and that concludes my section.
Good job. You're doing good.
Thank you.
So Jennifer, any staff updates?
Yeah, real quickly, the Board of County Commissioners had a briefing on the docket, you know, we are running on a twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, two year docket. But we still accept applications throughout the year for new comprehensive plan amendments. And development code amendments, and the board. Has moved forward to a twenty day public comment period, which is open right now and advertised through our website and legal notice and. Press releases going out soon if it hasn't already. An opportunity for the public to weigh in on whether. Two proposals should be added to the current docket, and one is a. Proposal to change a land use designation and rezone a property. Sort of near the Maytown I five exit area. Scott's probably familiar with it. I think it's a dairy farm now. I want to say the Dolman Farm. It's called Beaver Creek and on the application, because Beaver Creek runs through it, but the application is to would be to. Change the designation and rezone the property from rural resource residential, one unit for five acres to a rural resource industrial use. So a pretty major land use change, and so the board. Is asking for a public comment on whether they should dock at that or not, or just hold it for future consideration. And the next time they'd be visiting the dock, it would be in early twenty twenty two. And then the second proposal out there for public comment is right now. The county has an interim ordinance dealing with. Emergency housing, so homeless encampments in the rural area and the interim ordinance that the board has been renewing every six months. Basically contains. Flexibility for. The county to waive certain citing requirements for homeless encampments. To make it easier potentially if we need to, in an emergency situation, have an encampment cited in the rural area and. Right now it's an interim ordinance and keeps getting renewed on a six month basis. But this proposal, which is actually when a commissioner's proposals would be to make those changes permanent as part of our. Code. So those are the two proposals. You can go to Thurstonplanning.org. And look under the docket links. For information on how to comment, and it's a written public comment period. There's no public hearing, but the board will consider comments. And they have a briefing scheduled later in March to go over the public comments and to make their final decision on what they're going to add or not. To the docket. And that was my update.
Thanks, Jennifer. So checking on calendars with. March seventeenth is our next meetings. Everybody going to be able to attend that or anybody not being able to attend?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, and after that would be April seventh. Anything, anybody have anything for the good of the order? Then I call us adjourned.
I, I do have something. I'm sorry, I was muted. I was talking, but nothing was coming out. Uh, can we go to the thing about the joint meeting with Tom Water?
Yeah, we've done the doodle poll. I don't know, actually, Polly, do you have an update on what the results are coming in as for that?
On March eighth, that's the deadline, which is Monday, I will hopefully have a date that works for everyone. I haven't looked recently to see where we were trending. But since this, it's a special meeting, we'll have to get that out. We usually get that out like at least a week in advance, so. I can let everybody know where we're landing when I look at that on Monday.
Yeah, the sooner the better. Our calendars keep moving, you know.
Yes, for sure.
Yeah, just block everything out. Thank you.
Thanks all for attending. We're adjourned.
Thank you.
All.